I gave a call to order to be in the Sebastopol Town Board for Monday, February 23rd at 7:02. I'll ask that you rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the right, the United States of America, and to the right of the four states, our nation, America. In this world with liberty and justice for all.
If we will call it necessary to establish a quorum.
Supervisor Wyman.
Here.
Supervisor Teis.
Here.
Chairman Zipper.
Here.
Supervisor Wolkel.
Here.
Supervisor Stavros.
Here.
We do have a quorum and our next order of business will be the meet and greet. What we do is introduce the board. You go over the audience and you will be on camera. And we'll ask if you introduce yourself. I don't know what all your people are doing out here when it's so cold. All committing participants. Start over there, Lyndon.
Lyndon Wade, Quip Treasurer for the Town of Sebastopol. I reside at 5075 Lockport.
Dick Wyman, Board Supervisor, 4108, South Country View Road.
Chuck Teis, Supervisor, on Bay Shore Drive.
Leo Liquor, the Chairman, on Bay Shore Drive.
Dale Wolkell, Town Supervisor, Park Road.
John Stavros, Whitefish Bay Road.
Assume today?
Assume today. I'm Sebastopol Board of Education and I reside at 4380, Highway 42.
Lynda Underwood, Superintendent for the School District of Sebastopol. I live at 5324, Whitefish Bay Road.
Here.
I'm Peter Neffler. I write for The Advocate and I reside at First House, South of the County Line.
Paul Kazrail, Glidden Drive.
Dennis Markworth, Glidden Drive.
Jean Teis, Bay Shore Drive.
Lisa Blyden, Royal Drive.
Veronica Bean, Whitefish Court.
Tony Hayne, Matthew Road.
Tim Fleger, Plural.
Very good. You're all welcome and... I'm sorry. Oh.
Kylie Chapman, Glidden Drive.
I know we couldn't get the actor before. Okay, the agenda is next. It has been properly done?
It has been.
Most different.
Who approved the agenda?
One second now. I don't see anything...
We move by him. 12 A. up.
12 A. more?
12 A. move up, please.
Yeah, we'll take that right after the special report. Very good. Okay, all in favor, six to five, I assume now?
Aye.
Both? Participation? Oh yeah, I forgot. Let's back up. Public participation. If you wish to speak on any particular item that's coming up tonight, I'll allow you to do it then. But if you have something that's not on the agenda that you'd just like to tell us about tonight, there could be no discussion. However, that would give you an opportunity to make the agenda the next time around. So if you do have anything, please, that would be your opportunity. Here you're done. Let's go to Mr. Wyman, who is a supervisor and also a member of the Sebastopol School Board, who will do our introductions tonight.
Okay. Well, tonight we're fortunate enough to have two members of our Sebastopol School District School Board. Susan Tade, our President, and Dr. Lynda Underwood, our Superintendent, Sebastopol School District. Dr. Underwood will be speaking on the upcoming referendum for Sebastopol School District and has a presentation for us. Would you like to begin?
You want us to give the other microphone or what?
I'll use a big voice. Is that okay, Chappie?
I'm okay.
Chappie? Sorry about that, Lyd.
I'm okay. We're just speak normally.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. I appreciate you all letting us come and talk about this a bit. The more folks we can talk with, the more information we can get out there, the better people understand what it is we're asking and why we're asking for. On April 7th, there will be a question on the ballot requesting the public's permission for the school board to exceed the revenue limit. This is a year earlier than we might have gone, but we're big believers in planning and so want to know what we have as far ahead as we can get it. I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna do the Dana White show these. This is where we are right now in 2014, 2015. This big blue thing is the money that we get from the taxpayers in Sebastopol School District. Big blue is our tax revenue. This green is what we get from the state. It makes up about 4% of our budget and that's our state aid as well as categorical funds that we get from state. The little purple slice, 2%, is federal and the little tiny .4% is other. The important part of this is the one down here, where we've broken the blue into two different sections. The larger blue is our revenue limit this year. This slice of darker blue is the funding that we get through the levy that exceeds the revenue limit, permission that we got from the voters in 2013. This year, that makes up 16% of our budget. So the permission that we have now from our voters to exceed the revenue limit is a significant part of our operating budget today. So how do we get here is one of the questions. The state, through its funding formula, sees Sebastopol as having a really healthy ability to pay, which means we are one of 20 school districts in the entire state that gets no equalization aid. We get what's called Special Adjustment Aid. It was established in 1993. At that point, we got $344,000. Now, the numbers aren't real important here. What's important is the trend. It goes down 15% every year. This year, our aid, our general aid from the state is about $34,000. And because it continues to decrease, you can see that when we get to the end of the referendum period, it's $16,600. That's all we'll get from the state in aid. The aid is deducted from revenue limit, which means if we got a lot of aid from the state, we would be asking voters for less support in the taxes that you pay for the schools. This is what's happened to us since about 2009, 2010. We've had in six years a 1.17 decrease. You take it from '09, '10 to now, we still aren't where we were at that baseline. The revenue limit has gone down, which means we can't, within the revenue limit, raise the funds, have the funds that we need to support the programs that our kids need, our community expects. So, these are the kinds of things, though, that we've been able to do, that our kids have done with the support of the community. It's tiny, but I'm gonna take a minute to break. The high school has been recognized by Newsweek as one of America's top high schools just this past fall. Newsweek also recognized the high school in the fall as a beating the odds top high school, which means we have a really high poverty rate in our high school, but we've closed those gaps. Our kids are achieving. They're doing well. U.S. News &amp; World Report named the high school one of the best high schools in 2013, a bronze winner, and this past fall in 2014, a silver winner. The middle school and high school were one of eight schools in the state this year that were nominated to be a Blue Ribboned School. That's a piece that goes from the eight of us in the state, go on to the federal government and they're working on the application now to get that award. Our elementary schools, identified by the University of Wisconsin, is one of the few value-added elementary schools in the state, and that was just a couple of weeks ago. Our middle school in 2013 was named a state exemplary middle school. This fall, our elementary school was recognized as the state's Title I School of Recognition. It's not all at the ones. We have gone since 2010 from 76 students in Bamm &amp; Choir to 222. We've more than tripled the participation in music. Our Global Destination Imagination, we've had qualifying since the 80s, but they have qualified for Global, which is a big national world competition, every year since 2003. We've totally replaced our technology infrastructure so that it works, so that everybody has access, so that it's more robust, and we've increased the availability and the access for students, community, and our staff. We entered into an energy efficiency performance contract, which cleaned out a building that really needed to have some things cleaned out, replaced a lot of things that hadn't been replaced in a long time. Our air handler is original to the building, 1924. So they redid motors. They did a lot of things that make it more efficient and make it easier for us to monitor what it's doing all the time. We are revitalizing the fitness center exclusively through grants and donations and we're about $29,000 short of what started out as an $80,000 goal just three months ago, four months ago. 75% of our middle and high school students participate in athletics. This year, we're offering 14 community courses with 160 community participants in those courses. And, and this is an important piece I'm gonna come back to, we're serving 70 more students than we were serving in 2010. We have more kids in our building on a daily basis. So, this is what it takes to fund it today and is leading to the future. And there's a hiccup here that I need to give you the heads up for. This is, the blue part here is the revenue limit. And you see where it's gone down some and then it's gone up a couple of years, but basically it's stayed pretty flat. There's a little tiny red line that you probably can't see there. That's the $20,000 that's levied each year for our community fund, for fund aid. Then this green line here is our energy efficiency project, so that's in the levy also. So the blue is the revenue limit, the red is the community fund, the green is the energy efficiency, and the purple is the permission that the community gives us to exceed the revenue limit. So you can see when the revenue limit was high, we just asked for a little bit to exceed the revenue limit. But as the revenue limit has gone down and we've had to keep up that increase, that has increased. The red line here is, this is today, and these three years are the ones that are gonna be on the ballot on April 7th. A caveat on this. When the projections were done, we used the best advice of the people in Madison as to how to project our revenue limit. So what we projected was an increase in the revenue limit for three years. We're serving more students. The state, over the last two years, has given us a little bit to help in the revenue limit, but to help in categorical funding for students. Under a current budget proposal, there's no increase in the revenue limit. There's actually a decrease. So the important thing to note is these three years are each $1.5 million. If the revenue limit goes down, we can't ask for more to exceed the revenue limit. It's still $1.5 million. We'll simply have to adjust the budget accordingly. It looks like the revenue limit is not going to increase for us, that it's gonna stay the same or it's gonna go down, which means we have a challenge ahead of us and we will rise to it. The whole story is on here. The blue on the bottom again is the revenue limit. The purple is permission to exceed the revenue limit. Little red line, front 80, green line, the energy efficiency. The dark blue at the top is our fund balance. And fund balance has been, eh, kind of tricky lately. Our fund balance, we have been able to grow. We think really hard about spending anything and I'll tell you what I don't spend it on, we don't have to. Thus, you see my face on foam boards here. We use that fund balance so that we don't have to borrow money and pay to borrow the money for our cash flow. We don't get our money from taxes until January. So we really are going through the first part of the year using our fund balance to pay our bills. It also is where we go when we need something that we can't eke out of the revenue limit and the permission to exceed the revenue limit. We have gone to the fund balance for a new seating unit on top of the media center. We have included using the fund balance in our projections over the next three years. So this is the whole story. This is where we've been and this is what we're projecting for the next new years. People always want to know where, how do we compare to everybody else? This is where our mill rate has gone historically. This goes back to 1995, pretty high there. Came down, it came down, it came down. These three red lines are the first year that the district asked for permission to exceed the revenue limit. And so this is the mill rate with that increasing the revenue limit. The blue was the next two years of permission to exceed the revenue limit. The black is where we are right now. And the blue here with the three arrows, that's what will be on the ballot on April 7th. Where do we compare to the other districts? This is this year. Gibraltar is down here. They have two times the property value that we do. Here's Sebastopol, 545. Then you have Algoma, Southern Door, Luxembourg, Casco, Kiwanee, and Sturgeon Bay. There's a big difference in the kind of levy, the kind of mill rate that we have from district to district. And the last piece, because Mr. Wyman said us, I needed to explain this. This is, you're not have to learn about Wisconsin Finance when I came here. This is my tax bill. And what's circled in red here is called, it says "School Taxes Reduced by the School Levy Tax Credit." When you hear that Madison is gonna put $104 million into schools through the school levy tax credit, not a penny of that comes to schools. It reduces the property owner's tax bill. If you were to take the value of your property and multiply it by $5.45, you would come up with a number, at least in my case, that is $219.93 less than what's on that bill. So basically, I'm paying less taxes because the state is paying to the county to make up for it so that we don't have to pay as taxpayers. But I want you to keep in mind, it's called the School Levy Tax Credit because it's calculated using the school levy. Has nothing to do with schools. Not a penny. That's where we are. I'm happy to answer questions. I know that you've had a long agenda. In the brochure is my contact information. We have a couple of community meetings scheduled. I'm also gonna be going to A. Carver in Jacksonburg. But like I said, it is most important that everyone understand where we're coming from, where we're going, and what the purpose is of the question on April 7th. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Are you in effect doubling up on the referendum? In other words, are you having one year from the prior referendum and requesting this year?
No.
So they run concurrent?
The current referendum takes us through 1516. That's the last year of our current referendum. The question on April 7th starts in the next year.
Okay. And the other question is, you mentioned your fund balance. Could you tell me what the percentage of your budget is, it's both, and what they're in a way of dollars?
The fund balance, the June 30 snapshot of fund balance, because that's the number that they use and it's the only day that it's that number, is about 3.6 million, I think. And that goes up to about, I think it's probably 37% of our operating budget. I think that that's what it is. I didn't give you the exact numbers until I let them know what they are. They ran with me. But I'll tell you when we use our fund balance so that we don't have to borrow. This year, in January, because we've been using our fund balance to pay our bills, we got down to $200,000. That's not a lot of money to have in your back pocket. So we're gonna have to think about, should we be using all of our fund balance? Should we be using it down low to pay our bills and to the taxes? You know, we save money by not borrowing money. It used to be borrowing money because you made money when you invested it before you paid it out. Doesn't work that way. So we prefer not to pay interest, but $200,000 is, that's a win.
Very good. Any other questions, the doctor?
Yes. You said that the revenue limit started going down in '09 and '10?
It really started taking a dive. Where is it? In, I think it was 2010.
2010.
In this one. It went up minimally in 2010, '11. It was '11, '12 that it really took this dive down here. And what's interesting in the revenue limit, in 2010, 2011, comparing 2010 to 2011 where we are today, we're serving 70 more students and our revenue limit is $800,000 less.
And why is that?
It's, that's the question.
Good point.
The economy is part of it. It's reducing...
Anything happen in Madison that's relevant to that?
You know, everybody knows that the funding formula for schools doesn't work. The only thing it takes into consideration is the value of your property. So you have a school district like ours where we have high property values and sparse student population. Doesn't take into consideration the income, for example. So we have, you know, in our elementary, 50% of our students are on free reduced lunch. You can't tell me that they have a high ability to pay. Plus, your property value, that's only if you sell your property. That has nothing to do with what your income is. So everyone knows, even our local officials know, that the funding formula is dysfunctional. But what, but they're afraid to touch it. It's just too complicated. They don't want there to be winners and losers. I don't know if they'll ever do anything with it.
One other question. Do you have any data, could you produce some data, on the growth rate in your total expenditures or maybe operating expenditures per student
Oh, sure.
over the last several years?
Yes, we can track this one.
I think that would, I'm just guessing, that might be a powerful argument
Yeah, I haven't thought of that.
for your referendum.
Thank you. I'll do it.
Per student?
The per student expenditure.
Where did you get 70-some extra people? Everybody's talking about declining home.
I know. It's really frustrating, isn't it? Part of it is open enrollment. This original, this thing here, this is interesting. This red slice, that's called trans and they. That's what we get from other school districts because of open enrollment. Now, we pay out to other school districts for our students to open enroll somewhere else, but the balance is, we have more open enrollment students into Sebastopol than leave Sebastopol to go to other districts. So you're serving more students. You get the trans and they, but those open enrollment students don't count in the calculation of your revenue. So the revenue limit stays down even though we have more students.
One other question. I heard a comment about the community fund. Heard this before, but I have no idea what it is. What is the intent of this fund of money?
It's called fina. It's a community fund. The purpose of it, and I don't know the whole history of it, but you can levy and with those funds, provide services to the community. There's another piece in the community fund that people can provide work at school and in exchange, at a certain rate, we pay their taxes. With the community fund here, that's how we fund our community courses. That's how we have the building open and supervised for all of the club sports. We have elementary football, elementary basketball. A lot of the, all of the elementary organized sports are organized by community members and so we support those activities through that. We have been able to do some repairs on our outdoor facilities that the community uses. And so the key to it is, is it has to be primarily for the community. And the question is, if, because you know, we share a lot of, you know, our kids in our community both use the gym, that kind of thing. Is, the key on it is, if you were gonna spend that money without the community using it, then it doesn't qualify for using the community fund. It's kind of an extra thing. So that's how we do our courses.
And I think our payment to the town for use of our park comes out of the community fund.
And that is outside the revenue limit? Yeah, it's its own separate way of counting.
In addition to the information that he was requesting, are there any other unfunded state mandates that have come in?
Oh, man, you could add that, yes. They're on time. Unfunded mandates from the state and the federal government. Our federal funds don't increase, but the costs for some of the things that we are required to do increase dramatically. The state piled on over the last couple of years with educator effectiveness, the new assessments, the new standards, piling on, piling on, and piling on, and you don't get a penny for it.
Is that something you can add into a presentation?
Yeah, but I start to sound a little whiny. Because it is. I mean, it is, it's the way every single state in the nation is, their unfunded mandates. Wisconsin has not met its promise in terms of funding special education. Federal government hasn't met its promise in funding special education. We make big promises and we have good intentions, but the money just doesn't seem to flow.
I'm just thinking for people who haven't been involved in the educational system...
I'll try to think of some way of fitting in here, not whining about it.
Yeah, well, even if you would just put, now, these are some of the unfunded mandates and this is how much the cost is.
Yeah, and there is a cost.
Yeah, there is a cost.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your attention.
Very good. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Tei?
No, that's fine.
There was a question about the revenue formula and what happened in 2010, 2011. Is that the state legislature lowered our revenue limit by $600 per student. And that was the issue with the fuel box and a few other things that came into play. We lost considerable amount of levy revenue from that $600 per student.
So that was the legislature that did that?
Right.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Good luck on your referendum. So you're welcome to stay for the rest, but if you want to go home and get warm, you're welcome to leave. Okay, let's go on then to item number, new business number 12, letter A. The conditional use permit of Tim Fleger. Tim, you wanna come up to the front table, please? This is probably the most thorough presentation in paper that I have seen in a very long time. So I know you not to leave any tees unencrusted and eyes not got it. Why don't you give us a brief summary of what you, what your intention is and why you're here today?
Well, we're celebrating our 20th year. That was a part of why...
When is the party?
June 20th.
Okay.
Maybe for each benefit, would you claim what your business is, what you're up to?
For the past 20 years, the Team Leadership Center has primarily provided team building and leadership training on my family farm. Renovated the barn and built the first privately-owned ropes challenge course in the state of Wisconsin. We still are that today. Over the years, we've had great success in providing curriculum and programs to schoolchildren, to corporations throughout the continental United States and Canada. Many leadership programs. We've worked with Door County Leadership Program for the last 20 years. We do many, many different things. Help of Door County, which is a recognized 501(c)(3) here in Door County, came to us last summer and needed a new venue for an annual fundraiser. Their suggestion was that they wanted to do some type of a mutter event. Well, that being a copyrighted event, we called it now the Door County's Dirty 5K Runners. The first name we came up with, we found there was an entity in Utah that had the name and they had us cease and desist that name. So we've gone through a couple of name changes. So they've asked us to host this event for them because of who we are as an organization. So we began planning and developing a 20 to 25 obstacle-type course on the 20 acres that the Team Leadership Center uses. The planning department then said, well, you want to put some of these obstacles where you have to dig ground to make it muddy. That will require that we do a conditional use permit. And then said, are there any other changes that you might want to be making to your operation? Mind if we do this all in one application? So the application you have in front of you today has what's required to provide the event that we're going to host on May 23rd of this year as the first event and what we also might be adding as this event would grow over time. And as long as I was doing that, I also needed to add a single additional pole to my existing high ropes course to add more elements into that operation. So there's, there's a pole placed in the existing high ropes course. The event that we are hosting for Help of Door County is an annual event. So they technically own the name of the event and we're doing this one type of event for them this year in May. So that's why it leads me to this process today. Is that a good summary?
Yes.
Good summary.
Okay.
Yeah, the information provided to us was the original conditional use application and the proposed components one and two. And the description of the property as well as your background history and there's only considerations that may need to be made in the conditional use. And the rather all-inclusive. Also included your permit as an addendum two. And as I said before, completely overwhelmed by all the information there. Upon very interested reading. And you've done a good job. So with that, we'll turn to the board and find out if they read the information and whether or not they have any questions.
One question. If Help of Door County owns title to the new course or whatever.
To the name of the event.
The name on the event?
Yeah.
Would that prohibit you from using that event throughout the year? Or is it just one time a year for them?
For them, it's one time a year. And I cannot do an event with that name on it other than as a fundraiser for Help of Door County.
You could change the name and still use the facility.
Yeah, part of, part of the intent is to utilize this obstacle course for some of my clients that I currently have. As long as I don't market it and use it as that particular name and that event, they're fine with that. And so that was a part of our discussion when we agreed to move forward in a partnership with this event.
Actually, it's just the name that is the sticker.
Yeah.
If you want to turn to the page that's got all the covers on it. He's got, I met with him on Sunday. The one pole is in the middle of the other poles, so that's not going to be that far away. Across the road, he's in a hay field is where he's going to put the additional parking for the one-time dance. And on the lower part of the page, there's a 98-foot setback. He did a, what did he do? He took a bucket and scooped some little scoops to make it rough. And they were, what, 10 feet too close to the road? So he's going to fill in that other row and move them back.
Correct.
So that all the setbacks meet.
What did you mean by across the road for the additional parking?
Undun Road. The driveway intersects with Dun Road on the, on the upper left corner.
Yeah.
We tested this event last fall. And when we tested that event, the planning department came out then and said, these are some of the changes you need to make and why we needed the conditional use because I just heard soil. We have three rows with something that's called ankle twisters. The first row is too close to Dun Road right now. So that will have to be filled in and moved within the required setback.
So the additional parking across the road, you have support bodies and everything for that one-time event. On a normal day-to-day basis, what did you say? You have 10 people coming in and 10 people leaving at the same time? So your regular parking lot would be adequate?
It's adequate within the sufficient requirements of parking on an hourly basis.
In one of your pages here, you're showing that the large event parking appears to come off of your private road off of Plure. So you're going across now?
No, this, this is a, this is a driveway off of Plure.
Got it.
That's a driveway. And this is part of the parcel.
So why would you need to go across Undun?
Dun is over here.
Yeah.
This is the driveway over here. I'm not going across Dun.
Okay. I thought I heard John say that.
No, the setback from Dun Road needs to be 100.
Okay, very.
And then the driveway that would be to the west of this property, there needs to be 100-foot setback also on that driveway because that is a lot line. And the parcel on that side of the property is my sister's parcel.
And the other way is your sister, too?
Yeah, way behind the park.
So that's no problem.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
How many people do, I forgot to ask you. How many people do you think this is for one?
We're anticipating this first year, 20 teams of four, that we think will be a great start to get all the bugs and whistles out of the darn thing. But that, that's our anticipation for this first year.
How many people do you employ there?
Three full-time and 15 part-time, full-time season.
Richard, do you have a comment or question?
No, no, I, I think it's in good order and I think it's.
Chuck, do you have anything else?
As I read it, it says you're not really open to tourist traffic. People come up here on the weekend and all of a sudden come over and say, I want a zip line or I want to play in the mud.
That, that particular, that particular piece will not be open to the general public. We will only be utilizing that curriculum for said client. We do have on the current property today an adventure zip line tour that is a three-span zip line tour. And when we originally received our conditional use permit, because we're in prime agricultural to operate, we weren't classified as a recreational use facility. The texting has only changed over the years and we are now classified as a recreational use facility. And so there's text in there that we have to meet. And that's why you see the additional zip lines and the additional poles so that it meets that text. Those operations are open to the public Thursday through Sunday, Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Do you advertise that fact?
Yes.
Do you have pamphlets out for Door County visitor during this so far?
Okay. Any questions, Dan, John? Entertained a motion then, John, your number?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
You didn't need to fill out the worksheet.
Like we did for last month's text amendments, the request for town recommendation. The planning committee would like reasons for the town's decision. Is the proposal consistent with the town's comprehensive plan? And it appears there are no concerns or objections. But if you could just address those two points so that I can include that in the recommendation letter to the planning department?
One of the reasons, a couple of the reasons I found is, sorry, it's a salvage business. It'll bring people to our community. And that would be a couple of the reasons why I would support it.
It's a good recreational operation for the town. Expansion is consistent with the present use of the property.
All of the above.
And then in the proposed comprehensive plan, I found a part on page 1212 that said, he does have a, he does have a 20th parcel, so it says direct certain areas, residential and commercial development, to the least suitable land for farming. And, you know, so the supportive foundation and septic. So it would put, it's kind of low, so it'd be hard to farm there. So if you put this mud run in or whatever it is, it would be least suitable for farming in that area. So it would, it would put us as developing some of the area that is not priming. It's still priming, but it's not the most suitable part of the property.
It's tough to farm through those telephone poles and obstacles.
Those are only in one spot. You just, you can go around those.
It's a, it's a mess when we're doing round bales, I'm sure.
Okay, do you have the reasons then for the town's decision?
Yes, thank you.
So I have identity of motion to, in support, recommend to the FPC to.
Okay, are there? Okay, are there any conditions that you'd like to see go along with the recommendation? Or not?
No, he's already addressed the ones that, just that one setback that needs to be addressed.
So we do have the motion to support it? There is a second. There is a second. Any further discussion? All in hearing none. All in favor signify or say no.
Aye.
Repose? Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, getting back to the regular agenda. Approval of the minutes, board of supervisors for January 19. We have a motion by John and a second by Chuck. Are there any corrections, additions, alterations? Another fine job, except on page three, letter D. Linda, you want to bring it up?
I'm sorry, what page? Page three?
Page three, letter D, line 17.
Line 17?
I think that first word should be suggestions.
Okay. I'm writing too many, oh, oh, too many suggestions and submissions in there. We'll take a few out.
All right, great.
I'll make that correction.
All in favor signify or say no.
Aye.
Repose? Yeah, we can't let it get away all the time.
Well, I added line numbers now, which does make corrections, identifying corrections much easier.
Good.
Your career as a court reporter is duly noted.
Okay, the financial report for January 2015, including the budget versus the actual, the transition list by date. Do we have any questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll just approve it and place it on file. You need more than that? You need a motion or not? Okay.
Got one question on these. I believe it would be Wisconsin Communication Media membership and the blanket license. Those have to do with the cable. Are those annual or?
Yes, both are.
Ray, Chuck?
And that, the top of page two, the first two bills. And then the payments are later on in the middle. That has to do with the music you dove in on the CDs and that.
Right, the license is for unlimited use of about 120 CDs of royalty-free music. And it keeps increasing by about two CDs every year. It keeps mailing us two new ones. And we can, as long as we keep paying the fee, we have unlimited use of that for anything we want to. It's professionally produced music. It's very good. And the other one is a membership in the Wisconsin Community Media Organization. Do you know what that is?
Barely.
Well, they offer festivals, video festivals, which we've submitted entries every year and usually won something. They offer conventions once a year, a workshop once a year. They often sponsor bills that would be to our advantage. I think we hoped they would be in either the state legislature or the federal.
Somewhere in the Wisconsin Towns Association.
Exactly, only a different focus now, sure. Lobbying organization as well.
Any other question or comment? Now, why don't we do a motion to approve this?
Who's it approved?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify or say no.
Aye.
Repose? Moral committee reports and committee minutes. Part of your packet was cable or the PEG channel from a long ago. But at your table tonight was a most recent cable channel advisory committee as of January 15.
I have a question on this.
Go ahead.
I've had this comment from other individuals, not necessarily related to the cable committee, but people wanting to know where the minutes are for a particular meeting. And of course, we don't publish the minutes until the minutes are approved. And I know with our committee, we've had a six-month swing between minutes, but I think this might be a record. October 28, 2013 to 1/15, 2015. I would think as a matter of policy, we'd want to have a, a meeting of some kind to approve a minute sooner than every.
Many meetings?
Yeah, a couple of years. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Well, sometimes the PEG channel meets, I guess with a purpose in mind. If there's issues that we need to address and. I mean, I realize, yeah, it was a year, a little over a year between meetings. Yeah, the 2013 meeting was a, a meeting that involved more of the community. Question came up and supported the, the public access channel. And the last meeting we had was, well, it was issue on the report and a report and also capital purchases.
No, I mean, I understand that, Dick. I'm just wondering if as a matter of policy, if you typically would want something to go this long? Is that, maybe it's more directed at the chairman than anybody, but.
Sure, you can direct it, I know.
No, and he can bounce it to you.
I mean, we sometimes like, planning committee, I mean, although we meet more often, I mean, we sometimes like, planning committee, I mean, although we meet more often, the planning committee, but typically a lot of times the planning committee meets when there's a official use or variance requested by the planning committee, yeah.
Correct, because we'll be having a long way out of this, we can't get a corner right now, so.
Yeah, well, I. Yeah. Disagree, we're going to have that. A year and a half, we were getting a blend of.
There are several other committees too, though, that, you know, they get called out, they, they have a specific job to do, and once that job is handled, that last set of minutes is hanging there until you get called again. So. Maybe we need a policy of some type to get that last set of minutes out.
Well, we do have a policy that they are not made public until they're been approved.
Can we find a committee?
Well, just a move for thought, maybe leave it for the future, if we get that far behind, maybe not, just, yeah, but the troops for a few minutes and move on.
Well, a lot of what took place at the meeting on January 15, I see has to do with the request to buy cameras and whatever else. So I would think that anytime you're going to have an expenditure of dollars regardless, whether or not it's budgeted, you should have some idea of what it's for and not necessarily for approval. You can have a policy on it, but our biggest problem is the policy changes from time to time. I think the mere fact that they need to be approved by the, after they've been published or before they get it published is a good idea. I think a whole bunch of this will be looked at again when we get into the actual contract. We might have to go back and take a look at. Videoographer kind of deals.
It's on business, there's a resolution.
Well, any kind of minutes are better than not at all.
Thank you very much. Thank, thank Linda for taking notes.
Yeah, okay. Next will be license and permits. We're down to only a handful and independent inspections limited.
Yeah, we get a credit.
Okay, next item would be the 215 meeting schedule. Are we in final form there or do we still have some problem?
Well, we're definitely on for the February meeting.
We made that one, okay.
I think we're good.
Were you going to have a problem October or not?
I think so.
All right, we'll work with that one until such time as we have a problem.
The March meeting is to be announced?
Yeah, if we need one, we'll call it.
When will we establish that?
Well, yeah. No, in time to actually publish. Yeah, you'll be all contact.
Next week is March, but.
Okay, the next item then would be the Cable Channel Program Director and Videoographer Agreement, which might be caused to have a meeting in the month of March. So. We might need to have one specific to that situation in total. We have one that's rather outdated. And we find that although we do have a requirement on insurance, that we don't have anything on file on the liability insurance. And there were some other items that surfaced. And that, maybe it's a good time to go back and take a look at the entire thing one more time before we just automatically renew it. And if we need to make any revisions to it, we'll do it then. We can have the discussion now, but later on it's going to come up in resolution on the carryover of the dollars that have been budgeted and unspent for 2014. And. What I'm talking about right now is kind of like a prelude to, will probably be the discussion on the resolution forms. If anyone else has a comment now, would be a good time to talk about it, but.
Yeah, I asked a question of the committee about the two hour thing, what happens? And that kind of never got answered by anything.
What was your question?
My question was what happens after the two hours that they say in the contract it's a per session? What if it goes three hours? What if it goes four hours?
One of the difficulties in that is, you know, we, we don't keep track of the time of the individual, I mean, it's, it's up to the videographer to keep track, but, I mean, we don't necessarily have a time in, do you, do you do a time in and time out?
They're defining a session as two hours, so they are keeping track of something. So if they're defining it as a two hour session to get paid this much, what happens after that two hours?
Well, the problem is there's no one to verify, I mean, I suppose you could have witnesses to verify it was actually two hours, but we have to basically go on the.
But then why are you stipulating those sessions for hours?
Well, maybe we're doing, maybe that shouldn't be in the contract, I don't know. I mean, it probably.
You're laying out, you're laying out a legal contract here, so you can't just leave these open ended things out there.
That, that's probably why we should discuss the whole contract as a board. And that, I think that's a good recommendation for our next, for our March meeting is to have that as an item.
I believe the one we're operating under now on the program director and also the videographer is rather outdated and has not been updated.
No.
For some time, so.
That would be a good, good agenda item for March.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I think at last month's meeting, we had, we had moved the contract date out, what, sixty, sixty days, April?
April.
Or almost ninety, I think it was.
April 21st.
And one of the conversation points at that point was whether or not we should have Maddie as an employee or as a contractor, and we talked about putting something together with respect to that, the pluses and minuses of both. Had, had you done anything with that since?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a budget issue to begin with. I think it's good to discuss the contract in March to, you know, any concerns that people have. But because it is a budget item, my personal feelings is that we should probably discuss that, that first budget session that we have.
Okay.
Because there's implications within operating as an independent contractor or as a town employee, there's a budget, the implications involved with those. That would just be my, my feelings on it.
Yeah, the criteria for whether or not it's an independent contractor or a town employee covers the insurance as well, so it would be well to get that back in hand and see where, where it goes in. March should probably be as good, as any other month to take care of it.
Sure.
Unless we have to plow snow or something. There, one other thought however, is because it involves a contract and personnel with, we might have to have a session of that included.
Executive session.
Right, so. I'm sure if we, if we decide to talk about the cable contract, we'll bring everybody from Glidden Drive here. I don't know if we have enough seats, but well.
There's so much uncertainty right now as to the status of the employment. We've got letters from the insurance company making, kind of making recommendations or at least making note of some of the qualifications. If you jump a little further ahead in your packet, there's a quotation here which I'm assuming we're looking at buying some equipment for the tune of $2,300. And again, the question was brought up last month as to whether or not that should be a town expense or a subcontractor's expense. I do believe, and bringing up the resolution of transferring funds also, I would move at this time that we hold this over until March, when we can get the cable program director's contract. At that point, or at this point, we prohibit any spending of the funds or any transfer of funds that are budgeted to the cable program until the town board can convene the special meeting or the monthly meeting in March, along with the cable committee and Mr. Chapman and Irono Project.
Well, I can't allow it at this particular time because it's not here for an action item. I guess it would be, okay. So maybe be better off if we just wait with your motion until we get to the resolution and wait over then.
You wish to have it there, sure.
Okay. Why don't we just move that up and be done with the topic?
Why?
Can we do that, at least for the moment?
Two resolutions.
That is true, but we, we do put it on the agenda and the, we should be following some part of the agenda.
Okay, I'll go with that then.
Well, it's here for discussion and we didn't know if it's going to get into the resolution and.
Okay.
Furthermore, we have two, one of the reasons why, we, we tend to get ahead of ourselves on occasion, but here we have the resolution at your table, A and B. What was done is that the resolutions previously submitted were split apart so that we could take up the issues individually, one being for the town park and the other for the cable channels. So I, I'd feel more comfortable if we waited to that point to make any kind of motion on it. Okay, no further discussion at this time, Sturgeon Bay Utilities, the update on the, on the lights, I believe you ran through this before, and I think the information we got from Jason Berry is pretty well up to date. I don't know if you've been over on the area of Madison Avenue or the high pressure sodium fixture is now installed, but when you go through there, you can tell that there is a difference. And for us to make that change universally would not be all that good, we'll just do it as they burn out or need to be replaced. That agreed or not?
We do have one fixture right now that needs a bulb on a photo eye.
And where is that?
Do we want to change that fixture at this point or just have the?
Where is the fixture?
Where is it first of all?
It's, it is WPS now?
I don't know.
Where is it?
Where is it?
They're usually on top of replacing bulbs and photo eyes, that's a kind of surprise that they wouldn't have noticed.
Where is the, what's the location, Chuck?
I don't know, I thought I read that in here. It might be from, from WPS maybe.
Yeah. We have a different situation with WPS, they actually don't charge as much.
They own the fixtures, I'm just kidding. And what we had in here, somebody said one of the fixtures needed during the meeting to go up.
We did see a bill to.
I think we replaced that one, that was what.
To Sturgeon Bay Utilities last month for a bulb and a light. The fixture that need replacing is just the bulb and the photo eye.
All right. The next item in Door Kiwanee County Legislative Days. And we have a donation in hand of $1,000 from our group. And it would entitle us to two, two people to attend. That would be our donation to the Legislative Days event that is going to occur, and I'm looking for the dates.
Eighteen, fourteen, or fifteen, sixteen.
So we got a letter of thanks saying, okay. Unfortunately, we don't, we're not in a position where we pay or you pick up your, your per day outside of perhaps mileage, and we don't pay for any overnight. But if you think you might want to go, we'll try to work something up.
In addition to legislative action, I think most everybody is aware of the fact that there was, there is a line item in the budget that would eliminate the town assessor and place all responsibilities for assessment on the county and the, take that responsibility away from the town. I went to the district, Wisconsin Towns Association meeting last week. This is a major issue. That the towns association is very concerned about. And it's something people should be aware of.
Just to add to that, I did receive an email from our legal counsel at Wisconsin Towns Association and the new director there, and I will be forwarding that to each of the board members with some points regarding keeping assessment practice local versus having state control or something. Just watch your emails in the next day.
And also in that, it did state that the budget proposal is for 100% equalized value every year.
So what's the position of the towns association group that you're at?
They were definitely opposed to it, the state senator Coles was there. And, let's see, Assemblyman from that district, Jacque, I think his last name is Jacque, were both strongly opposed to it. So whether or not it goes through, I guess we'll find out as the budget progresses. Obviously implications are is that the county would, would be responsible for all property assessments, and that that cost would probably be transferred to the town anyhow. The town no longer would have a board review. It would lie within the county, county's responsibility.
You okay? Well, if you need to go or you want to go, make sure you contact Linda. Well, if you need to go or you want to go, make sure you contact Linda and she'll make you, make sure that you get the information. Also attached to the, the notice was the issues you can identify that might be included in this year's presentation down in Madison.
And that opportunity is lost now because they're already drafting the paperwork as to what will be discussed.
I don't know, did the date?
It will be coming out very short. Order here.
Okay, I don't have that information.
So Chuck, will that be coming to the town? I don't recall from last year if we saw those issues before or not.
Well, when I attended last year and the year before, I didn't know the issues until you have like this meeting beforehand to throw you in on all the issues and what congressman you assign or what legislative you assign to go see. That's when I learned the issues at that point. I'm sure Rob Burke would like to know if you want me to follow up with Rob. I'll be happy to send him an email and ask.
Well, I'd be curious. I mean, sometimes you might find something of interest, I mean, beyond the norm. Something you have, something that you have an underlying urge to join the bandwagon.
Reduction to school aides?
School aides would be on, amongst others.
Under new business, the request for 2014 budget carryover and 215 budget amendment, re the cable channel and town park. I think we talked about one or the other. We'll defer that until we get down to the resolution. Mytec Town Road Utility Construction Notification. John, you looked over the entire map. You know exactly what's going to be done.
Oh, yes. Wish I had. Well, the project is going to start at 2826 17E 10 pole. So if you find that pole, that's where it's going to start. More than likely, it is the cell towers on the corner of Whitefish Bay and HH. There's a cell tower there, and then it's coming all the way across Whitefish Bay Road to the cell tower on Brew Falls, placed to hook the two cell towers together with fiber optic. It's going to be a big enough fiber optic cable. It's 96 fibers, so. You know, the footage is in everything or?
No, no, that's fine. The information provided to us.
I think exactly what it's worth in terms of gigabytes.
96 fibers. Let's see, there's the last anchor, there was 1,244 inch fiber, so.
Okay.
If they can bend it and multiply it, there's a lot.
Just over a billion.
Yeah.
No, the school, I don't think we've gotten notice yet of, of, well, of this happening. And I don't know if this is part of the dark fiber connection that's.
This would probably be the dark, some of the dark fiber because when it comes across there, or out from Wellsings there someplace, I would imagine there's going to be a hand hole, and the other fiber comes down the highway that way towards the school.
18T's fiber is buried right underneath there?
I think so, yes.
By the one side.
So I think what they're trying to do is be, make, no, they're not buried on Whitefish Bay Road. They're buried from Jacksonport down 42, 457.
The dark, the dark fiber is actually purchasing the fiber from Charter.
Right.
So it's not going to be either of these cables, because Charter has the cable already sprung out here, would be buying a section of their cable and running it independently.
Well, this, we would be, we'd be purchasing it from, from Cellcom, Enser.
Ensite.
Ensite, not Enser, Ensite.
Well, are you buying it from Charter or are you buying it from Ensite?
Ensite.
Well, then they'd have to lay it.
That's part of the.
Netlec is a subsidiary of Mytec, which.
Yeah.
So.
Cellcom is a subsidiary of Ensite.
Somehow, yes. I got exactly.
So this might be the, although we haven't received notification of it yet, I'm guessing this might be first step.
Possibly, what they could be doing is sometimes what we do is we bury a loop so that if you get a cut on one side, you could run it around the other loop. So I'm not sure, but if they're putting that much fiber in there, they're planning on, you know, making it available because I think with the last job when they came around Sturgeon Bay, didn't they go to those towers on HH there? Who's going to look at it?
That would have been HH.
I think they did.
They came down Peterson, Cross Martin, HH to the tower.
To the towers on HH.
That was about a year ago.
Right, so now they're just connecting.
Now they're going from tower to tower.
Tower to tower, and then with what comes down the highway, you probably got a hole or anything else. So somehow their dark fibers are probably in there.
They're just dark.
That's all you need. You put the equipment on both ends and you shoot like that. If there's like.
Okay. Door County Planning Text Amendments to the Zoning and Land Division Ordinance and Notice of Public Hearings on the same. The information provided was a whole bunch, and if you, if you want to go back and clear out your file and start all over, you could do that as well. The information is that they were going to bring it forward, I think, eventually, is it March 5? Is that was the start of it? Yeah.
One part I read in here was in these developments, they're talking about the private road. Took forever to find it in that pile of paper, but the width of the road and the, the entire width of the right of ways did not, according to this, sound like what we would be requiring if they would wish to have that road taken over by the town in the future. And I was thinking that that might be something that should be brought up, that if it doesn't meet those requirements, it would never be a front road. We had that problem out in the Bluff area where the people had to give up a portion of their property in order to make the road legal, and now all their lots are non-conforming. They want to do any building on them now, they need conditional use permits, so.
Well, there's.
No variances.
There's, there's other, there's other substandard roads too. Maple Heights.
Maple Heights is in, and they, they did what they did, but this is correcting this zoning for the future.
Right.
So I believe it should be stated that way, that if you're going to put this private subdivision in, and then when you find out the school bus and the mail carrier won't come down that road and the town won't plow that road, all of a sudden they come screaming to the town, they want us to take it over. If it's a substandard road, we don't want.
Yeah, but we have an ordinance.
We have an ordinance, but it's, it's contrary to what they're saying in the zoning.
This thing is on Chapter 6 Design Standards, and it says, it talks about requirements for roads serving major land disturbances, and it talks about the road right of way, 66 feet width and travel surfaces, and it basically kind of mirrors what ours does, with the final being the county's not obliged to accept the road into the county maintained road system unless it meets this description. So unless we're less than 66, you know, our footage or whatever is different, 82 feet of travel surface width.
You know, the first thing it says is changes we are required to make and then changes we should have in the long panel, and then some of the changes are clarifications. I mean, it sounds like they're just setting the horizon course of keys from what I got out of it.
What they're looking at, though, is private road development versus in a minor land division and also one in a major land division. So you can get down to 50 feet right of way with a minimum travel surface of 16 feet, and those would be all the private roads or driveways that you're talking about. I think the month of March, we'll probably have a couple of people that are willing to join the plan commission, so we should be able to get that up and running. And seeing that Dennis is here tonight, he probably wants to be a member on that group.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, okay. Is there for your information, I think it's going to be tossed back and forth for quite a bit before it's going to be approved, and.
You know, the zoning book that we have that we're always getting updates on, does anybody think they actually have the current version? I know I've been sticking so many updates in there, I now got multiple page, 18B subC.
You're supposed to take the old ones out.
I know, but if you, I do.
If you're updating with what I provide, they should be right up to snout.
Okay.
Yeah, Linda's volunteered to do it.
All right, because I've taken and done that, but even after a while, I start to look.
That's yours.
That's, that's exactly where I was going.
Okay, is there for your information? Okay, we need authorization of payment of the March 2015 vouchers, bills and claims in lieu of a board meeting. If we're going to have one, we can supersede that, however, in the event that we don't and she has to pay the bills, we should make a motion to.
I would move an unauthorized payment of the March 2015 vouchers, bills and claims in lieu of a board meeting.
Okay, do we have a second then?
I'll say.
Question or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the next would be the notice of payment of March 2015. No, this would be the interest payments due on the town hall debt service, and it shows that that's due in March 1, and the dollar amount will bring it back down to the remaining bond owed is, what is it, 400,000?
Yes, 400,000 will be our principal balance after the March 1st payment.
16, 17, 18, 19, and we done.
Hey, commendable.
Schedule Linda now on the calendar and mortgage burning. Charlie, please.
The next one would be the Door County Visitor Bureau is proposing or suggesting or offering to install two electric vehicle charging stations, and they would donate up to 10 as a check or?
Door County Visitors Bureau is going to purchase 10 of these units, and then they're going to more or less give them to anybody who is willing to put them up. They're starting with the municipalities. So they're offering one to the town of Sebastopol. Its value is $3,490 plus tax, and then there's a $100 a month package for a tracking system on it as to how much it's used and what times it's used and how much energy it uses, and that information goes right back to the Visitors Bureau so they can kind of monitor the value of this program. After the one year, they expect the town to take over that monitoring at $100 a month. The town would be responsible to install this unit and supply it the energy, you know, that it needs to run. Supposedly, it's claimed that it doesn't take anymore to charge a electric vehicle than it does to run your refrigerator. So depends how dead the battery is, how long it sits there, how many people use it as to how much energy it's going to use.
Well, it says that they had 42 charges between May 21st and October 7th.
The Visitors Bureau put two of them in last summer, and over that, well, up to that date of this letter, there were 43 cars charged.
I have a location I would love to suggest.
451.344 kilowatt hours were used, and that costs approximately $47.84, so.
I think this would.
The units can be set up to use a credit card if you want the people to pay for its use. They put their credit card in, just like a gas pump.
I don't like the $100 a month.
There's been arguments, why should somebody running a electric vehicle get their energy for free when we have to go and buy our own gasoline?
That was a good question, a good concern.
Another thing that's coming up is, where is the road tax attached to this? You know, we're paying road tax on gasoline, and now you're driving an electric vehicle, you're getting your power for free and you're not being taxed. So, you know, these are questions that keep popping up all the time.
The governor wanted to increase the registration fee on hybrids and electrical vehicles, so that's something I'm.
Would Buick Roadmasters be the kind of vehicle that we would see at our charging station? Something like a humongous wagon?
If you plug it into the. If you hook them up to the battery, it might blow because it's AC and DC.
I do have a suggestion for where we could put this, and I think the person would be more than open to having.
Wellsing.
Right by the byways where people can come and charge and read about the town and then go visit all the stuff in the town, and while they're charging, they can visit Steve's store and they can buy some cherry pies.
Well, that would probably be cost efficient because the electricity you probably don't have out there.
To put, to put this thing someplace, you want it where it's going to be visible, you want the people to know it's there, but you also want them to have something to do while their car is sitting there being charged.
We got a car.
Now, you're looking at, if they drove from Chicago in an electric vehicle, by the time they got to Sebastopol, they'd need a full charge, four hours minimum. So what are you going to do if you're sitting at the town hall there for four hours?
Go to the.
Why I said the byways, it's perfect.
Well, they're going to come inside and use the facilities, and then you'll want to run across the street to have a mirror or two.
Get their hair done.
Get their hair done.
The byways is perfect.
Also byway sign.
Put it next to the byways you've got.
Well, we could put it down by Feger's new mudhole and they can, so zip lining and, and.
They never, they never find it.
That should take about four hours, so.
It could fill you in, but they drive to Randy Nesbit and there's no way the town can donate a piece of equipment like that and pay for the installation to a private entrepreneur. So John is now convinced that they will turn down the offer down there.
Okay, didn't they have Roger at Stevenson Pier? Stevenson Pier come forward on that?
Yeah, he said, you can put it in my parking lot. Now, I got that convenience store there, so for the people to do it.
The thing is, if the municipalities don't take them up on this, he will turn to private concerns next. So you still might see one at Stevenson Pier, but it'll be at their expense now, not the town.
Roughly thirty-five hundred dollars to install it. It would be Roger that would be paying for that rather than the town, which is the way that it's proposed in Gardiner.
That's probably a better venue for these stations anyhow.
Well, do you want to make a decision tonight or you want to wait for a month or what?
Hey, if it came down to the point that they really go to private places, then we ought to at least let Steve know if he's interested. Got a venue where people can spend time, we could put it out there. We don't have to do anything in terms of our investment. Great. Yeah, but that's, I'm saying that won't be private, pretty much, just let them know.
Could the visitor bureau do that with the private sector?
So if they don't get them out to the municipalities.
Is the offer going to be the same, thirty-four nine?
I would imagine it would be.
Okay. All right, I think Dan's got a good idea. You want to turn it down right away or you want to?
I think we'd turn, I think we'd roll over for a month, but if it goes to the private sector, we should at least let, you know, a couple of businesses in town know and see if they have interest.
Well, we can turn it down and still let them know.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, okay.
So let's turn it down.
Make a motion, we turn it down.
Thanks but no thanks to their second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Approval of the vouchers, bills and claims for January twenty through February twenty-three. You all had an opportunity to look at?
We are missing a signature.
Maybe me, I think. Okay, I need a motion then too.
We approve all your bills and things. January twenty through February twenty-three, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's carried. Resolution number one two zero one five. Yeah, let's do one A. Which would be the cable channel equipment purchase. And you do have an attachment in part of your packet showing the expenditure at twenty-three oh six. What's the status on this particular one? Richard, is this ordered or any, what's?
This was discussed at our public access channel committee meeting, although the minutes were not approved. Can you check the minutes?
I'm looking at the quotation, it expired one thirty-one of two thousand fifteen.
Well, this is the first time it's been presented to the board for approval. Aladi, do you think the price quote is?
I think we can get it renewed at the same price.
On the backside of the pipe channel advisory committee, capital purchases for two thousand fifteen. Motion was made and second to approve the moving forward of the unused budgeted capital items, capital equipment item for two thousand fourteen budget to two thousand, two thousand fifteen. So the committee, that's the committee's recommendation. I would simply say that this is budgeted and approved by the board and also approved by the electorate that was present at our budget meeting and approved the budget. So these are approved budget items.
So then why didn't you spend it in two thousand fourteen?
Well, Aladi was, the reason, the reason, the reason being is the availability of equipment and also for consideration of the price. It was a considerably lower price to wait, wait a while. It just happened to fall in between our two budget cycles.
This is a forty-six ninety left over from two thousand fourteen. And you want that added to two thousand fifteen?
Right. Request that was made, well, actually was taken at the committee to add this to the capital equipment budget of two thousand fifteen as a carryover.
So you're looking at forty-six ninety to be added to the seventy-six?
No, the total.
Total is?
Total would be seventy-six ninety. Forty-six ninety carryover, three thousand dollars is already budgeted in two thousand fifteen. The carryover is forty-six ninety.
Okay, go back to my original question. The quotation from connecting point dated ten-six two thousand fourteen. Yeah, the extended purchase price to twenty-three oh six. It looked like that expired at one thirty-one two thousand fourteen, but looks like that could have been extended to two thousand fifteen or should have been. So what is the status now, is it still going to be?
Mr. Chapman?
The quote included a typo of the wrong year, just like we often do in our checks. I had the guy revise that and he can't make an indefinite length of time. He has to have some kind of expiration, so we gave us two months. I'm sure we can get it, the same item or possibly even a newer model for the same price or even less. That's the nicest thing about this field, electronics, things get cheaper, they don't get more expensive.
Yeah, and I, in comparison to the quotation for the town park, that, that is dated nine twenty-five fourteen, so that one isn't even dated yet.
So my question then is, is there going to be a problem if this transfer of dollars from fourteen to fifteen gets laid over to the end of March or until such time as we have the cable meeting?
I don't see where that would be a problem because you still have three thousand dollars in this year's budget, which would cover the twenty-three hundred dollar camera. The transfer of funds is not something that needs to be handled immediately.
And I said that the cameras are cheaper the longer you wait.
Let's wait ten years, it'll be free.
Well, you get a new camera then at twenty.
No, you wait long enough, they'll pay us to take it, right?
Well, let me throw my two cents, since I think I stirred the pot last month at this, regarding this whole thing and the issue of whether or not Laddie would be a contractor or employee and whether contractor buys only equipment of the town does. So I don't think we've answered that question, so whether we move the funds forward or not. I wouldn't suggest that we spend the money to buy the camera until that's resolved.
Can I say something related to that?
Go right ahead.
Referring to the videographer agreement, it says, recording equipment shall be supplied by the town. But this shall not preclude the use of other equipment where applicable on no charge basis.
That's why we need to go back and revin, revise the videographer and the other.
These are budgeted items, I mean, these are, again, just reminder, this is line items that were approved by the board during the budget approval session and also was attended by the electorate. So the electorate and the town board both approved the budget items. So I think the other contract is a separate issue which shouldn't be mixed in with purchasing of the equipment.
Not really. I mean, if we gave him a subcontractor and we decided if he wants to contend and he has to buy his own camera, we should get that, we should get all that cleared up before we go out and buy a camera.
I think in any case, the camera and all the equipment, whether it's servers, whatever, still remains a property of the town. Whether we have an independent contractor or whether we have an employee, all this equipment is technically property of the town of Sebastopol.
But if it's a contractor, Dick, which is where this topic came up, it says that the contractor should provide it. And it's not that, you may or may not be, you know, a hundred percent correct, it's just it seems like if we go and transfer the funds and to buy the camera, we got the cart before the horse because we apparently have enough questions about this relative to your conversation of last month to make him an employee. That I think whatever we do, we don't buy a camera for, till we've had this issue resolved.
There's also the issue of, you know, underlying issue is, do we want to, you know, in effect retain the public access channel? If we do, I think it's in the best interest of the town to own the equipment. If the equipment is owned by the independent contractor and the contract is broken by the independent contractor, the independent contractor leads with the equipment, which leaves the town so not just another, you know, you can, I think there are two separate issues here.
I think we should clear up the one.
I think there are a couple of issues here. Number one, Linda, is it accurate that they do have a budget for capital improvement equipment at three thousand for two thousand fifteen?
That is correct. If you go back to the financials, just.
And what you're looking at is, here are going to be twenty-three hundred dollars and it has adequate money in there.
The two thousand and fifteen budget, here at the very bottom, has our capital equipment, capital improvements, capital asset replacement, cable equipment, capital improvements, we budgeted three thousand dollars for two thousand and fifteen.
So my read on the entire thing is if it's, as Dick is saying, is an allocated budget amount for two thousand fifteen has been properly approved and gone through in a budget session and it's a line item worth three thousand dollars and you're going to buy it for twenty-three oh six. I think go ahead and do it and we're going to lay this resolution over because there's no need to bring the forty-six ninety forward until the month of March.
So.
So run and buy your camera and get it done quickly before I change my mind.
Do you want a motion by the board to approve that?
No, I'm telling you the way I read the agenda, but the motion on this particular resolution would be just to forget about the forwarding of a two thousand fourteen budget to become part of the two fifteen capital expenditure.
Motion to table the resolution?
Yeah, let's, why don't we just lay it over, that way we can bring it back anytime that we want. Do what?
I don't think you need a motion to do nothing, do you?
No, this particular resolution is in front of us. So we're going to lay it over without any action. Okay.
We're just rolling it over for a month.
We're going to roll it over for a month, bring it back in March, how's that?
Give us something to talk about in the future.
In the meantime, Laddie, can your truck make at the Green Bay?
It's cheaper to have it shipped out the truck, I mean, the camera.
Okay, who made that motion?
We don't have a motion right now.
We don't have a motion.
We have a, we need a motion to lay resolution two thousand fifteen, yeah, okay, table it if you like. Dick made the motion and we're at the second.
What was the motion that Dick made?
He's going to table it.
Table it?
Yeah.
Okay, since nobody else is going to make the motion, I move that we table resolution zero one B two zero one five. Amendment to carryover two thousand fourteen.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the cable, it's zero one A.
B is mine, stay off my motion.
Okay, guys.
Since everyone is eager to make the motion here.
Okay.
Move the table, resolution number zero one A, two thousand fifteen, budget carryover of two thousand fourteen funds for cable channel capital equipment till March.
Second?
Second.
Question or comment? We're allowing him to spend the three thousand dollars, that's spin elegant. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
So it did pass by four to one. You want to be recorded or not? Okay. Okay, let's go to the next resolution, which is zero one B for two thousand fifteen from the town board. Dan?
Okay, this is a request to roll over some funds from last year. Basically, the park committee met and decided to purchase with budget from last year a one more, which we're quartering from her last small engine. The one more exceeded the budget by a hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So the committee is asking that we, one, cover the hundred and ninety-nine dollar delta from the budget. If you look back over the last few years with the park committee, each year we've decreased the capital equipment budget significantly. Last year was three thousand dollars. They're taking that, excuse me, they want to roll over fourteen, fifteen hundred and forty-four dollars.
Same question for you, why didn't you spend it last year?
We did spend it last year. We're actually short, we're actually short. Hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
So why are you asking, you're asking for the fourteen sixteen?
Well, we could take the hundred and ninety-nine out of the general budget or general fund if everybody agreed. But the excess that was left over last year, the figures lost, we're going to do the resolution and they have no additional funds for capital. They try and move some of that money into this year. But in either case, it could be either way.
Is Bill willing to give you that knowledge, that recognize that quote that was made back in September?
You know? Actually, I believe.
You finally got the machine ready.
No, the machine isn't cutting grass yet, but it's, it's very close. The machine isn't cutting grass yet, but it's, it's very close.
It's already been purchased.
Basically, we have a large amount payment.
Just that you're short $199.
We're just short $199. And if we have to tonight after the meeting, we'll just collect that extra money from the board and pay for it.
Yeah, okay. Did that include a motion?
No, I didn't.
Don't have any motion.
I will make the motion and I will use it. The resolution, motion to approve resolution 01B, 2015 TB.
Well, if you only need, say, $200, I don't have somewhere to go for $1,400.
If you let me finish the motion, then you get a second and we can come back. We approve that, all right? Is that good enough, Linda, or do you want me to start from scratch?
No, that's enough. Must be the goal whether it is. Okay, do we have a second then to allow him to do that? I'll second it. Question to comments.
Is this something that, you know, is this going to serve the park for a number of years? I mean, we talked about capital purchases for a larger tractor, something that, you know, might last longer or...
This is a small riding lawnmower so that we can do the area that we can't do with the large skag. And you can't cut grass around the town hall with it either. Yeah, it lasts, it'll probably last us five, six years.
I see Tony Haines' name is on here. Maybe he'd like to just... Did you want to pay a little upfront money to...
It's only 200 bucks.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other question to comment?
Tony, would you want to comment on...
Yeah, we, 3,199, that's with $400 off for our... That already included the $400 off from the municipality. When we went in by Bill Hurlash, he said he would hold it. I called him again because Linda thought the proper channels would be able to do the carryover instead of just, you know, paying it. So Bill said the price is still good on that. Tied into that, we've got the old Husqvarna we're going to put for sale. And my question, I guess, to the board, you know, it's not on the agenda. Do we put that out on bids? I mean, or do we just, let's say if we ask $400 for it? You know, how do we handle that thing?
Does it add value?
I don't know what it's worth, you know, really. I'm going to, Bill's going to come out and look at it when he delivers the simplicity. He didn't want to take it in trade, you know, because he said he, you know, didn't handle that.
What did you do previously? Just get rid of it?
The last one, we basically junked. The only thing that we've recovered on was the golf cart. One time we picked up a few bucks on it. I think we just put it back in the...
This thing running or does it need a new deck or what?
What's that?
The Husqvarna.
Husqvarna, we stuck, two years ago, we stuck, I think, $300 under $350. The problem we had with it, driving it on and off the truck, you know, with the ramps we had, once, no matter how careful the guys were, it would catch. And we'd take that to Clark Lake and wait. What we've been doing now is the guys threw a couple of riders, or the push lawnmowers into it. They got on them and pushed by hand. You know, they have no problem with that, you know, a couple of fellows we had last year. So it's just wearing out. If you notice once in a while, if you, you know, you go too fast, even if you go slow, it's starting to scalp. I mean, she's starting to work. I think for a residential, you know, if you got a smaller yard, it'd be good. But we cut a lot of grass on here in the bitches and she's just starting to grow.
Maybe rather than try to sell it for little or nothing, you could bring it over here to the town hall and leave the clerk to use it so she wouldn't have to bring her own lawnmower.
Well, I was thinking that if we got a charging station there, during the summer while they're charging, they could pull bees. And during the winter when they're charging, they could sell the silk.
Go ahead, Linda.
I think the town board should, because it's the town hall one, should allocate funds to buy the town clerk a nice electric push mower. And she could do that and start right here in the...
Yeah, then she could plug it in and charge it all.
Or in the building. We'll investigate that when we sell the Husqvarna.
We'll loan Linda the money.
Okay, the motion is to transfer the money to the 2015 capital outlay of 1,584, correct?
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? There was a grunt over there. Was that like a no? Okay, we're four to one. We have a no on the end here. Correspondence is next. Anything in the correspondence that captured your interest?
The Hitching Post. If the Hitching Post is no longer in business and the past owner holds the liquor license, what becomes of it?
Well, he still has it till June and he's putting in his hours. So there probably really isn't anything we can do to get it back until June 30th.
But it's not transferred to McLoon?
No.
It can't be.
It can't, he'd have to come back in front of us.
According to the letter here, the person that holds it left town.
Correct.
So the business is closed. The business is not fit to be open according to the building inspector. Do we have the right to withdraw that license or reclaim it?
See, that's what I was thinking too, but on the timeframe, he's been open enough hours and everything, so...
Okay, the clerk has the answer.
The license cannot be transferred. Right now, the license is issued to Hitching Post Public Cafe LLC, I believe, with a Clonesa agent. Obviously, they are not open and not operating. They can't take it to another establishment. It is only good at that location as Supervisor Staminus indicated. They're saying they're closed. They have a license. So they decide to reopen their license and it's good until June 30th. The town board can certainly take the circumstances into consideration and revoke the license, officially revoke it, in which case someone else could probably come and apply for that.
We have plenty of licenses left anyhow, so it really doesn't...
You do have two licenses available as if. It's not like there's a huge demand for Class B combination licenses in Sebastianville right now.
It would probably obviously increase the value of the property if the license wasn't...
You would think as soon as it comes up, the grass, that somebody else would grab it. You never know.
Well, perhaps the owner of the property will reapply for the license.
Well, the license is issued to that property. If the McLillans decide to open that business up and come and ask for a license, can we issue them a license to operate if there is already one issued to the building?
The board could revoke that license. Normally, the old owner or old operator will simultaneously surrender that license to the new operator. In this instance, if they don't voluntarily do that, we would just consider that license revoked. I don't know what the license is, the physical license. It's supposed to be kind of posted on the premises, but according to Nancy McClellan, she can't like it.
Did the original license ever get turned in from the McLillans holding group?
That was never turned in either. What we did was I do keep a copy of all the licenses and I had Nancy sign off on that, that she could not locate the original.
That's a violation in itself right there because it's supposed to be posted on the premises in plain view of all the patrons.
Well, there's no patrons, so even if it's not posted, it's okay. It may be spotted with a flashlight.
I mean, the owners, the old owners, I would like to think they would just turn it in if we wanted them to. He's, seems like a nice person, so, I mean, what does he want it for? If he's posted up, you know, they can't come to an agreement, so... Would you like a phone call to him to see if he will turn it in or what?
I'm just asking what happened to it or what, you know, what the situation might boil down to here. It's going to expire in June anyway, so...
Places back for sale again.
I don't believe the building would be in repair to the point where it could open by that point either, so... There are some major concerns there right now, so...
All right, let's let it work its way out by June.
So the building inspector actually shut it down or not?
He shut down the work.
No, they, they left town.
I know, but what did the building inspector do?
Well, they were trying to move back into the property and they have, they had actually made some modifications to the building. If you were to look on the south end of the building, they cut in two doors, external doors. So in the midst of all of that, they pulled the plug and left, so...
So the time being, what, what is our approach?
Let it remain with the property until it expires and it does not renew it?
We have other establishments in town that I can think of, two right now, that have valid licenses until June 30th and they're not open.
Well, that's right. I do know.
I can think of two off the top of my head.
Is one, oh, held by the bank or no?
Terry Hill.
Well, no, it was, it was issued to the operating group of LLC.
Okay. Well, as long as we treat them all the same, I guess, would be the difference.
You don't want to be targeting one over the other.
All right. All right, you're in charge.
She's known that.
We knew that a long time ago, didn't we?
Thank goodness.
Okay, any other correspondence? Are you all interested in the municipal services payments and LOUB and all that other kind of good stuff?
We have an awful lot of loan in 45.
All right, Chuck, you wanted the Wisconsin towns thing with the urban towns committee included. Did you have anything else on that?
Not really. The Urban Towns Association works in conjunction with the Wisconsin Towns Association, trading support dollars belonging to organizations, coming up with some of the same items legislative work and that. And the Wisconsin Towns Association is recommending that we take the opportunity and join the Urban Towns Group to keep that support coming. I do believe, Linda, you've figured out what it would cost?
$663.
$663 a year would be our membership. I think it would be well worth it. I don't know what the rest of you feel, but...
Some of the legislative objectives, priorities. Number three states that support legislation to allow for manure drag lines in local road right of way. My interpretation would be that a manure drag line is a pump line. I could be wrong, but since we have passed ordinance against moving manure in fields, but that's just one, one priority.
I don't think any organization you join, you're going to get a 100% satisfaction of everything they do. When, when they're working for the municipalities and the entire state, you're always going to have somebody somewhere that doesn't like a particular item. I don't agree with the manure drag lines either. That's part of the irrigation system of a, of manure, which we've tried to prevent here in the town. But when you look at this good, I mean, they support the increase in general transportation aids per mile of road, trying to go from 2117 to 2202 at least. And they will continue to fight that. They support the TRID program and the TRID program.
What's, what is our membership in the Wisconsin Towns Association?
Oh, about the same, 650 plus.
So we'd be paying about $1,300 to belong to both of them. And both are already, really soon to be operating within...
Same program.
Same program, same sort of, it might be a duplication.
I think it has some merit, but I think we ought to hold it over to budget because we're squeezing at that time of year trying to figure out where to go. And 700 bucks is 700 bucks. Might buy another camera.
I agree, and I think it should be brought back then. Is this an annual calendar?
Yes, it's annual dues, just like WTA.
Dues are figured on the per capita 25 cents a head for your population.
That is correct.
Our dues that we pay to Wisconsin Towns Association, I believe, is around $955.
And it is, it does run January 1st, December 31st. Good idea to bring it back at budget time. We'll move on. Wisconsin Asphalt Pavement Association, you can go to a seminar presented by Northeast Asphalt, April 2nd in Kimberly, Wisconsin. And the other was the wind sighting report. And the equalized value by county, equalized percentage change. And interesting to find out the county of doors ranks 65 out of 72 counties. Bad, bad.
It was a little surprising that it went down.
Better give that to Peters.
It doesn't look good for the asphalt school. So you're going down.
Okay, moving on, the office is going to be closed 25 through 27.
Right.
We altered that. It looks like it's also going to be closed tomorrow. Are you going to be closed tomorrow?
I'll be here till about 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
We need to extend that one more day, the 27th and March 9th through the 13th. And she's going to go down and get her green card renewed. Coastal Byway Council Meeting is March 18th at 8:30 at Sister Bay. Spring election is April 7th on Tuesday. Polls are open from 7 to 8 p.m. Our next annual meeting is April 21st. And that will begin at 6 o'clock with the regular board meeting to follow the annual town board.
It'll just be the, it'll just be the video conference.
Okay, the next, uh, meeting, if we're gonna do anything, I'll make sure that you're all notified quickly. And we'll do it, uh, before all the snow melts, so you have a reason to leave home. And we'll, might have to wait until it warms up a little bit. Do we have any agenda items offside of the, uh, Peg Channel for our next meeting?
For our next meeting, I'd like, uh, everybody to go to the, uh, Internal Revenue Service website and get publication fifteen A.
Fifteen what?
Generally has to do with collection of tax, or, or the collecting and holding of taxes and payments, but it deals with the classifications of contractor versus employee. It'd be a good place to start to get some information and to make sure you don't make the mistakes between what an employee is and what a subcontractor is.
What was the number in the?
You have a link to it, why don't you just send us a link if you got the article, we can get it.
Link would be good.
What did you say it was, fifteen what?
Fifteen A, publication fifteen A.
IRS?
There's a IRS website, forms and publications.
Maybe, maybe it can be sent out.
I can certainly do that. I will send it out with the information on the statewide assessment for the rules.
Okay, why don't we, uh, take a look now, does somebody have a problem with a particular date in March, or? Before you know it, we're gonna be there.
I'm going from the twenty-first, to the twenty-sixth or seventh.
Looking at a Monday?
Yeah, we can go anywhere. John, what works for you, would have to do it on four thirty-five or six, or? When did I, I, I would get the meeting, make sure that you're there. So outside of nine through thirteen. Anybody have any pool nights or anything like that? Dan, you gonna be around or gone?
Um, I'm gonna be gone the week of the twenty-third. She's gone the week of the ninth, so that's either the week of the second or the sixteenth through the thirtieth.
I'll phone Saint Patrick's Day, seventeen.
Saint Patty's there?
It's fine by me, we can have green beer later.
Well.
Thirtieth?
Seventeen is not gonna work.
Thirtieth?
Well, let's get at it sooner than that. Where are you gonna be going, Dan?
I'm gonna be in Phoenix.
No, I mean, when?
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-third, I was gonna say, where am I gonna be going?
No. The week of the twenty-three?
Yeah.
Sixteen, what?
Sixteen?
Well, spring begins March twenty, maybe that'd be a good time to, so. We don't wanna have it on a Friday night. Tuffy. Tell him not to come. Uh, okay.
Turn it on the nineteenth, then.
Eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteen, uh, school board meeting.
Eighteen.
Sixteenth is no good? Sixteen would be good.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen on the Monday?
Sixteen is good.
Okay.
March sixteenth?
At six?
At six P.M. Monday, March sixteenth.
Six, you said? Six.
Six P.M.
It's not a regular town board meeting, is it?
It's a closed session.
No.
It's just gonna be a special.
So it's not gonna be a regular board meeting?
Correct.
It's gonna be a special meeting.
It'll be a special meeting and, uh, might even have to be in closed session. Find out. Okay, I set it aside for, uh, March sixteenth at six P.M. Any other business to be conducted, no? Yes?
Move to the gym.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second and third, all in favor, say aye.
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 And we are.